Still typing up privacy section.
He's gonna email you now.
Exactly. We go with spoken.
Good evening, welcome to the February 24th meeting of the town of New Falls Planning Board. First up on our agenda is review of the minutes of February 10th.
I had a comment about the minutes.
Sure. Well, let's get a motion to approve them. To approve them, then we'll have a discussion on what needs to be amended.
So I make a motion that we approve them.
I'll second the motion. Open it up for discussion. Now, what do you want to do?
Clarification. The applicant, Will Morait, asked that I recuse myself from review of their application, which is what it says in the minutes currently. But actually, the letter to Chairman Calamano said that I be excused from the planning board, so that should be corrected. Because there's a difference between recusing oneself and being excused.
What other recuse, excuse? Okay. Tom drove very fast.
I don't know.
Oh, for a change. Okay. We're reviewing the minutes of the meeting of February 10th. And let's see if anybody has any additional comments. Motion to accept the minutes of the February 10th meeting as amended. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Abstained.
And Augustus abstained. On the agenda, I want to put in a modification under all business. We'll have a discussion with K&amp;E tonight on their project. Okay. Next up, Dunkin' Donuts. How we doing?
Good. How you doing?
Better. Dave, you want to summarize where you were at with them?
Yep. We wanted to have some. Yeah. I received Dave's review comments. I'm going to turn it the other way. Received Dave's review comments, they were pretty minor. I made all the changes with the exception of the light intensity plan. There was a comment that there are two decorative wall sconce light fixtures that are on the side of the building, and they weren't reflective in the light intensity plan. So I'm confident that, you know, even with those added to the model, the light intensity will be well below what the town, you know, the maximum amount the town requires. I can review this with you guys and go over, I guess, Dave's comments if you'd like. There was a typo on the submission set as to the date that we received the zoning board of appeals variance is. So that's now corrected. It was the 13th of January. There was a comment regarding the annuals, flowers around the monument sign. I added a note to reflect that annuals will be placed per the detail. There was a typo regarding the drainage invert, so that's been removed. I think it was parentheses eight inch. The zoning table was updated with the correct front yard setback of 35 feet on Cherry Hill. So that's now updated on this set. There was a comment regarding the detail for the handicap space. There was a sidewalk shown on the plan set that you guys reviewed. That was removed because there is no sidewalk up there. It's a curb.
Yep.
So that's now reflected. And then the other thing in talking with Mario, the applicant, regarding the handicap stall. Originally, we had shown two handicap spaces. I believe the building size only requires, necessitates one handicap space. So we were looking to remove that handicap space and provide the one. So that's the only additional change that wasn't in the comments, but I did talk to Dave's office regarding that item that we wanted to change. I think that covers everything, right, Dave?
I was just curious on the bicycle racks, whether you had checked with the bike and pet committees. They have some standards for the racks. I don't know if you've done that or not.
I didn't do that. We chose a real nice decorative bike rack. And we were actually proposing two of them. There was one out in this vicinity, and then the concern was raised about snow plowing and, you know, so we added one there and bumped out the sidewalk, so that'll be completely maintained. I don't have a detail with me tonight to illustrate what it was, but just to try and describe it, it's the oscillating.
I'll check with my expert over here.
Yeah, it's the.
Tim will know.
The rush standards. I can check against that, but I believe the type works, as I remember.
Okay, yeah, I don't know how else to describe it. The one that's undulating, it's kind of mounted in two posts, and then there's a series of...
You know, I could find it, because I was at a meeting on campus where the college students had done a lot of research into the latest bike racks. And I think that that undulating version is considered, you know, a previous generation, and there's something that's preferable. I could probably find out what that is. And it's pretty straightforward.
I have the question in my office that the bike pet committee has from the national, whatever organization that has the recommendations.
Okay.
So I can email that to you.
Okay. That's great.
So we'll leave that to something that we can do later on.
Tell the Eastwood's no longer needed. It's a good thing. And then there's a waiver that.
So it's just new to require the construction of the road.
Hudson, then Verizon, then Hutterfield, DeBoo, Paul again, but into the right of ways, so there's no reason for a guy wire to be in the property.
So there's no need for it necessarily.
And Stopping Shop is prepared to?
They're supposed to build it as soon as the blacktop plant's open, so be thrilled.
Okay. So I just, yeah, yeah, that cleared that up. Whatever it was, we got a solution, you know, so it's worked around for everybody.
There are two waivers that have been requested. One for the design of water supply and sewage disposal. It's on public water and public sewer, so that's not required. That's item H. And then item W was site distance to the intersections, and intersections are there. They're close to the driveways. Driveways are close to the intersection, but there's certainly site distance there. Both of those waivers seem to be.
Okay. So.
It's a type two action. How do you think back with how the impact?
Right.
We did send over a set of plans to the DOT several weeks ago. There's no work permit that's required here. There's nothing being changed in the intersection or in the right of way here for this project. So I am presuming that that was for their information, trying to keep a file on everything that's going on on Main Street, but I'm not expecting to comment.
Okay. The board have any questions, comments? We need a motion to grant the waiver for the.
Design of water and sewer.
Design of water and sewer, and.
And also for the site distance for the driveways.
And the site distance for the driveways.
Seekers of type two.
Yes, so.
Right.
Further required.
So, a motion to grant waiver for.
Second.
Any further discussion on those two? All those in favor? So we have a motion for site plan approval. Conditioned on the changes that were proposed being reviewed by Dave. Once that's completed, then Chairman can sign off. And for review of the bike rack. Before we buy something, let's see what they have. Kelly, just send it to Tim to make sure he's looking at the same thing.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if Bike Pet is on the same page as the, as this college group, who said they had done a lot of research regarding optimal racks.
Yeah, if we could have a copy of it, too.
All right, well, could you send the rack to the board members? Okay, thanks.
That comes up a lot.
Any other guy that we got to propose the conditions, anything else?
The bike rack and the photometric issue that I had.
Okay. Based on that.
We're going to require him to do another photometric study or accept these. He was asserting that the tool on the wall wouldn't affect what they've already done.
It would slightly increase it, but I'm confident that it would be less than, you know, the maximum amount. But we'll put that together. I think Dave's asking for that plan, so we'll provide that.
Stacy has something to look at.
Okay. So we have the bike rack and the lights conditioned on it to review that. Okay. Anything else missed? A motion to grant site plan approval to Dunkin' Donuts modification. Have you guys made it or ready to second it, right?
I'll second it.
Second it, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. All right. Update the plans, work with Dave, take a look on the bike rack, so we know what the design is. And the lighting, we're going to update that anyway. So I think we're set. So why don't you make those modifications, make sure Dave has a copy, and then if he signs off on them, then I'll.
Okay. Do you have many copies?
Kelly, do you know how many copies I need to provide, or?
Site plan.
I have the site plan. I got it written down in there. You need like two Mylars and three paper, one for the planning board, one for the building inspector, and then as many copies as you want signed.
Okay.
So two Mylars and at least three paper.
Okay. Great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. The guys in the back, just to be ready for the case, we've been reviewing Dunkin' Donuts. I want to make modifications to the site plan. Dunkin' Donuts across from the plaza. It has to do with the cooler enlarging the space on it. So we've been reviewing this project for a couple of months and looking at it. They had a modification that required them to go to the zoning board of appeals because they were, needed a variance. So they did that. They went to the zoning board of appeals, they got that approved. We have to send it up to county, county planning board, to review it, since it's on a state road. And they received it, and they had no county impact. So we were just finishing up basically what they were doing, what we had been reviewing with them for the past couple of weeks. So there are going to be some modifications to Dunkin' Donuts. But it'll probably be less noticeable, since we're not changing anything in the parking lot or the driveways. But basically, they're putting a little walking cooler in the back of the store. And they're putting in bike racks, if you heard the discussion. We require that now on review of all commercial projects of installation of bike racks. Bill, we're going to talk about K&amp;E and where we're at, what's he wants to do. So I wanted him to come up and just kind of go over that. We have a site plan that requires extensive modifications. Bill's indication is that he doesn't really want to do all the work that was in the site plan, but he does want to improve the front end of it, and I don't want to do the talking now.
Let's bet. I mean, I was going to do this like radical change and move the store into the warehouse, and I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to do the facade of the building, and then I got to address some violations. I have to talk to, I'm probably going to have to do what Dunkin' Donuts and maybe go for variance. I guess the cooler that is next to the taco shack, which has been there for 13 years since the day we opened the taco shack, is, I guess, in violation of the original plan. So I'm hoping to keep that there. We really can't operate without it. So, you know, I'm going to come back with, as you suggested, a modified site plan, which is really, probably just going to address that and.
What is the code set in terms of where the cooler should be?
I don't know.
I think there was, there were, I can't remember all the things, you know, throughout the months and years with this, but I think we have a whole little list of a couple of different things. I can't remember.
Who's that and the shed and the sign on the side of the building, which I took down.
The sign is, yeah.
The front sign is up. That's, that's all that's changed since the last time I was here, is that the sign went up out front.
Yeah. We got a shed.
And then I have a shed also that I, to keep the empties from getting soaking in the back, and that would have to be on the site plan also.
And you're probably, because that's right up against the property line, you probably need a variance if you want to keep that shed.
Yeah.
So what we're looking at, a modified site plan, is basically just rearranging the facade in the front.
Do I have to address that, or it's just going to be like, just, you know, siding and stuff? That's already been, I mean, is that something that we have to?
Well, we have, I think you.
Not structurally going to change anything, you know?
Right. I think you gotta give me a diagram, something so the building inspector can go out and say, hey, yes, you did this.
Okay.
Or no, this isn't on the site plan, you can't have that.
Right.
So I really need a layout of what the site plan is, and then we can take a look at it from that aspect on it, knowing that we reviewed the project before, which included all the changes and floors and everything else on it. So, but I think I need an amended site plan that shows what you're actually going to do. And the cool ass be there for the taco shout, you should show the cooler. You got to address what you're going to do with that shed, because if it's too far back and it's not on the site plan, it's got to go, or you got to get probably a variance for it. But until I see the diagram, my drawing, I don't know what to do on that. So really, we're looking at an amended site plan map. We can start off with, you know, probably easier to do a sketch plan, so I don't get into all the details of everything on it. But draw that up and see what's there, and let's discuss that on it. I think that's what we have to go with it on. Okay. So, no, I, you know, I think the board will, well, I don't know, continue the application with an amended site, with an amended. So the approval that we granted on the first one won't be necessary going forward on it. It'll be on a different project. Remember the first one, he had major modifications to the building, and we're not going to see that, so.
Supposed to be bringing in their compliance or variances.
Right.
Yeah.
So we have to look at the norm, I guess.
Yeah. So.
But it seems like the new modified site plan is basically just to deal with something like the storage facility and the cooler. You know, he basically needs the modified site plan to go and pursue the variances, correct?
As they said, yep.
And then the other, the other bit is kind of a cosmetic.
Or cosmetic.
Siding change, which we wouldn't ordinarily need a full-on site plan for that, would we?
If you're changing something on the site plan, anything on the site plan, you have to come before the planning board. Unless it's so small or moderate that you can go simplify it, or it's internal. But anything on the site plan that shows on the site plan, we have to see it. So.
Is it going to be the same facade as was planned or shown on?
Yeah, sort of siding, like we discussed, yeah.
So you're not removing existing siding, you're just putting siding on top of.
Yeah.
That's what I'm wondering, is this a less involved site plan? Is this a simplified site plan, just for this cosmetic piece?
To the extent that he has the violations and then there are things on the site plan that, on a site, that aren't on the site plan, we need something that shows all that information, so we have it up to date. So i.e. the cooler.
Sure. I was just wondering if they were like two different procedures, like almost like pursue the siding and the cosmetic piece via a simplified site plan, and then the more involved site plan that requires the variances. It's almost like two initiatives. I don't know if that streamlines the process or not. Or should it just be one? I think part of the, part of the challenge that, that we're struggling with, too, is that, you know, we want to allow you to kind of do what you need to do for your business, but, you know, where we've just kind of ran up against deadlines and then.
I mean, it's been years, I know. I just, I just didn't do it. I just dragged right. The more I think of switching it and how I could get the truck parked in the front, it's just probably a nightmare. So that's why I decided not to go with that.
So what I'm suggesting is like, how do we almost like piecemeal this, so we're not setting you up for failure again?
Yeah.
Where we're, you know, maybe in like bite-sized chunks, it would be easier for you to accomplish.
Well, I think before it was a more complicated project, so if it's simpler, it won't be, you know, something that you're avoiding.
Very simple matter. It's just siding and the roofs and stuff. It's cosmetic stuff.
I'm still sad about that beer bottle sign. It was a great sign.
Well, I, my point, I think where I want to go is it's time, you know, Stacy sat on code violations because she thought that the site was going to be modified.
Yeah.
So it's, so there are code violations that we need to remedy, one way or the other.
Absolutely.
And I think.
Well, that without a doubt requires a conventional site plan where you have to get the variances. But I'm just wondering, are there?
Can we piecemeal it?
Piecemeal it to make it more achievable.
I know where that word is. Segmentation of it.
I mean, it seems pretty simple.
Yeah, generally, the other things that, you know, probably won't take as much time, will take the same amount of time, I'm just thinking that, to do it all at once, but I'm not sure if we can segment it out or come in again. You know, again, the goal of the site plan was not so much getting the modifications done, but to get the violations cleaned up.
Yep.
And that, so I hate to sit down and see us do a site plan on facade and still have the code violations, which puts Stacy in a catabol. Tough spot.
I think you'd want to have the violations cleaned up first before you can ever approve the site plan, whether it was modified or.
Yeah. So you could just work on that and then come back in for the cosmetic. Yeah.
Well, whatever you do.
You've got a site plan drawn up with the cooler.
Get it drawn up with what's the stuff you want or need on that day, how that addresses the code violations, and whether you have to go for variance or not. And we can do concurrent review. If something looks like, oh, he's going to be, definitely need a variance, we'll just send it off to them while we review the rest of the project then. So, knowing you have to get something drawn up, and to us, we're on an extension on this project. We said 30 days, and we want to go 60 days. That would give them to the end of April to have something before us.
That sounds good to me.
Motion to extend K&amp;E's application 60 days.
Second.
Any further discussion on it? So looking from you within, before the end of April meeting is.
If I have it sooner, I can bring it to.
Yeah, oh, definitely. But a modified site plan, showing what you want to leave on that site, how it's going to address any of the code violations, if that means I'm going to address the, say, the shelter, the.
Shed, yeah.
Shed in the back. If I need that on, on there for an extended period of time, then I need approval for that from the site plan. Then if it has a short distance to the back line, then I need to go in for a variance for that. But I need to see everything that you want to do on it.
Okay.
Go from there.
All right.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Bill, thanks. Appreciate you coming in. Oh, did we go yet? Oh, all those in favor? Thank you. That's why I got you guys here, you know, I can. Okay. We've been reviewing, well, K&amp;E came before us, God, it seems like years ago, to modify the beer distributor there and do some work around it. So we had a site plan, we approved it, but he never started work on it. Generally, site plans are good for a year. Unless you do something, you lose your spot, or you lose your application. The board recently got the ability to extend approvals in municipal law. So we've been reviewing this application and extending it, waiting for K&amp;E to start work on his application. He did notice, he did start something, he did put in a new sign that's on the front of the building. But he hasn't done any work on that project. So the board was very upset that, why give it an approval and keep going on and on, and he's not doing anything on it? So we asked the man today, and that's why he came in today, to basically talk about what he actually thinks he can do versus what he proposed he was going to do. So it's scaled back down from a lot of modifications, internal, and to cure or fix the things that are in violation of the code now, and to address the facade or the front of the building with some newer equipment. So basically, the board gave him 60 days to come back with his plan, show how he was going to modify this building going forward on it, to keep his application going. Okay. Next up on the agenda, on continued discussion on the finding statement on Will Morait. That's all I had, I think.
Like you want to come up or?
Not yet.
Let's see your new chairs, they're nice.
Not but the best, eh? Way to stand me down, so that's what I think it is.
From the Holiday Inn.
Oh, yeah. Last week, we reviewed a couple of sections of it, and then. Looked at soils, geography, topography, and air quality, and as far as we got, we got some comments in it. Auguste wasn't here, and Lynn wasn't here. What I proposed to do is pick up a few more sections going forward on it, then leave time for Lynn and us to, if they had comments on those other four sections, to be able to do it in front of the board.
Before we jump into finding statement, last time we spoke about yourself as chairman responding to the Will Morait letter, and me having a formal written response. Do we have those? Have those been submitted? those, have those been submitted or? Because we both made a comment at the meeting two weeks ago, and then George had suggested that I respond in a written letter and that you also respond in a written letter. So I submitted my written response to Wilmerite's general counsel.
You sent a couple of letters.
Yeah. We did. There were actually two letters going out to Wilmerite, I got to check which, if they went out on it. One was on the meeting with the village and the other one was your letter there, so.
A response to me being asked to be excused from reviewing their application.
Let me follow up with both of those because Kelly was out Thursday and Friday and it was a little hectic last week on it. But we had drafted them up, so I know they exist.
So we're all set with my written comment, I've submitted that to Kelly and that's in the file.
And we'll get you copies of the other letter.
Great.
This week. Okay? So George, since I've been quiet out all times, suggested approach for tonight, you can start with, you know, the beginnings and just keep going through, or did you have any other way you want to talk about?
No, I think I'm basically looking for comments from the board. I've got Augusta and Lynn regarding some of the points we discussed last week.
Yeah.
I'm looking for board comments on the substance, questions, issues, concerns. Basically, what I need to know is that we've identified the impacts, the mitigation measures, how adequate to address those impacts to the extent we can.
Well, maybe we can think about, we obviously went over a few sections at the last meeting and Lynn and Augusta were not here for those, so I think, Mike, you were suggesting that we do that at the end of tonight's meeting, but are there other sections that we have all reviewed that we could go over right now? Like where, is there a section that you know that we did not review two weeks ago that you're ready to discuss?
Well, I've pretty much read everything except for what you, what George sent yesterday, which is groundwater, terrestrial, and aquatic quality, so let me see here.
George, I have a suggestion for your format. Instead of labeling them ICW 6972, why can't you just say?
Energy.
Penex A soils as of 02/24/14. Wouldn't that help?
It would.
That would be really great.
Unfortunately, I have law office document management to contend with. That's the way it works.
I just get them and rename them.
What I could try to do is see if I can figure out a way of working on that.
Well, I just rename it when I get it.
Okay.
It's not intentional.
Why don't I go through the?
Yeah, why don't we go through the?
Go through them, the top areas, and if you have substantive comments that you wanted to make in that section, and you want to talk to the board about it, let's talk about it. If you have just editorial comments that you got too many words or this should be capitalized, we'll just send those off to George at a later date. You can say, I got some editorial comments, I just want to, but nothing, and we'll go through that and we'll just see how far we get and what we do. I do want to leave time to make sure that we do touch on the comments that you've sent to George or on soils and on the other areas that we did last week.
Can I ask an overall question that applies to many sections?
Sure.
Okay. This, particularly the environmental sections that just keep coming up for me, is I've sent George so many places where it just says, who will monitor this? Because I feel like this, you know, we talked about this whole clerk of the works thing and we have that list of a million things, and I see a lot of places where it says like, this and this will happen, and 100% of the time, it seems to me it's the building inspector, which I just feel like that's so much work for the building inspector. And I know we talked about the, you know, project sponsor or applicant hiring a person that we would oversee to go through like these million things, idling, and I don't know, I don't know for other big projects, how does that usually work? Seems to me that there's so many things that could just go through the cracks, like who, I don't know, how can the building inspector be in a million places at once making sure that all these, you know, window blazings are the right type and?
Sexist.
Why don't, we asked Stacy.
If she's not, if she's ever busy.
If she's ever busy. What her plan would be or what she envisions on this going forward and monitoring on that one, okay?
Yeah.
And I guess I have a related question. So Augusta was talking about construction-related oversights, but then there's, no, absolutely, then there's all sorts of monitoring that must take place on an ongoing basis, such as like the pest control and to make sure that it's, you know, somewhat environmentally sensitive. So with a situation like that, like, how does that work going forward? Like, is there a fee schedule that the, that anyone requiring that type of, any property requiring that type of review would have to pay? Like, if you own a building, you have to pay an annual fee for it to be inspected? So this is like an inspection process? So is there, is that under consideration or how does that work?
The general process by which this is going to work, and I think it's similar to the way we did Stop and Shop, is that we will establish, we'll have an agreement between the town and the developer. It will provide for an escrow agreement, escrow account to be established and maintained, and it will work basically like plan review does. Work is performed on account of the application to monitor, to inspect. The town will employ someone to do that to the extent it's necessary. It could be someone actively monitoring the activity, it could be somebody monitoring compliance reports. Where the applicant is a professional who reports to the town, says the following things were done, it's commonly done with stormwater, where there are certified individuals who have, on behalf of the applicant, monitor the circumstances, he says, reports back to the applicant, and that information is available to D C. The monitor has an interest in ensuring that it is being objective and fair because if their D C will spot monitor, and if they find problems, the person will be out of the job basis. So you.
Because they're like a licensed individual?
They're certified, so you have to employ a certified professional to do that. If it becomes a problem for D C, that person can lose certification. So he has self-interest in being objective and reporting the circumstance. Depending on the nature of the activity, it could be an architect, it could be an engineer, it could be a certified stormwater professional who would provide the initial monitoring. If the town determines it's in its interest to monitor it with its own staff, it can employ the engineer, it can employ other individuals to perform the specific functions on whatever schedule it deems appropriate, and payment for that would come from the escrow account.
So what I envision were two different things. Once I ask Stacy here is the construction phase, I mean, it's a major construction phase and a project like this would take the building inspector all the time that she's got plus to monitor that. The second phase is what Tim's talking about, we have a number of monitorings going on, monitoring pest management, vegetation management, and things of that sort, that all require an agreement between the applicant and the town on the monitoring effect and then the cost and what people are doing, so there's an agreement that shows that. Those things be monitored and by who they would be monitored by, if we know, or we'll put in town representative, if we don't know. Town decide when we get to the stage of that. But again, as George said, if it's a stormwater, there's probably a certified person on it. But the monitoring plan, and it's one I gave, Augusta's the charge of making sure we capture all the monitoring, will be all written up in a separate document with the requirements and the payments for that.
So when will we write that or who writes that document?
Well, we got to finish this to find out what we're monitoring first.
Okay, so after, okay.
There's a number of agreements that would come out of that, but this would be one of those that would be developed, like, first thing I do is, you know, how, you know, Stacy would have her plan, but the monitoring of everything that we got into, wherever it says monitoring by.
Yeah.
That would be part of that document, that contract, that agreement between the applicant and the town for its ongoing review and payment and how that would work out.
Okay, so yeah, so I think there's a couple of places throughout that I've sent to George where it's just not clear, it's just a statement, but it's not clear that it will be monitored. So I think we need to add a line of like, this will be monitored by this, or, you know, and then figure that out in the monitoring document.
The general panel would be that the town picks the person doing the monitoring?
It would either do or review the monitoring. So if it determines that it would be best for the town to have some individual watching improvements or watching the work get done, it would pick someone to do that. If it's satisfied that the engineering professionals from the applicant can certify that the plan is in compliance with the construction that was approved, it could do that and review it periodically and spot check. Really depends on the, I mean, Dave can probably tell you more about how that works on real job. Dave, not probably, Dave can tell you.
Contractor has to review the site for all of the erosion controls every day, and they have an independent inspector that comes by at least every, has to be once every seventh day, or when there's more than a half inch of rain. So it's pretty close monitoring. They have to keep a log at the site that's available to the town or D C or anybody else that shows what was found when the inspector took a look at it, date that it was inspected. So it's a pretty thorough document.
And there is a provision in the Stop and Shop developers' agreement that does provide for monitoring of site plan and essential improvements by the town's consulting engineer, by a landscape consultant, by the building department, to the extent it's necessary for the activities that are outside the scope of its normal inspections, or other employees or other contractors that the town determines necessary to ensure compliance with the terms and conditions of the site plan at all. In this case, we would include with the finding statement and the mitigation described therein.
So that would be the kind of document that we would draw up.
Okay.
So that's why it's necessary to capture all of them. Make sure we don't miss anything or we said we're going to monitor it and then we don't pick it up there as being one of the jobs.
Okay, all right, great. Well, that answered my question.
Tim?
That answered my question, too.
So that's why it's important, it's tough reading it in sections, but the idea is to get most of it, the big comments or the significant stuff together, and then to have a large bottle of wine and sitting down and read the entire document, anyway.
Literally what I did.
Okay, what I'm going to do is go through each of the topics from a broad point, if you want to stop, we want to talk about it, if we have something significant on it or something we want to get out, we'll do it there. If it's smaller, you can just add some minor comments, I'll send them to George, they're just editorial, we'll work it that way on it without necessarily reading through it. So we copied, we did soils, and I'll come back to that at the end. B was geology, it's a one-pager, on existing conditions, anticipated impact, proposed mitigation. The short ones are easy. Okay. And it's not to say it closes it out, but I just give at least George a handle of where we had to concentrate the additional.
George, we kind of touched on this a little bit last, two weeks ago, so in the geology section, for instance, there's like a quick mention of stormwater management.
Yes.
So, and you said, you know, that's the challenge with this type of document is there are themes throughout. So is there a way that, you know, we can almost say, reference the stormwater management section for additional?
What I will be doing as we finalize this document is looking through the different sections to make sure there are internal references. So if mitigation is addressed in the surface water section, what is relevant to soils will be a reference in that.
Okay.
And that's my second draft.
Doesn't prevent you from noting it on your own copy of that page? I saw this before and I think it belongs somewhere else, I'm making a note of it. Okay, section C is topography.
Did you go over that one?
Yeah, we went over that one.
Because I had a little question about.
Sure.
Something, I think it's on page one of one, line 21, it says, where practicable site grading will avoid the diversion of existing water flow towards the wetlands on the site. Well, how do they get to be wetlands if existing water flow doesn't get to them? I don't really, I can't, I don't understand that, and there must be a reason for it, but it's not clear to me.
Additional.
Are they talking about existing flow from the new construction?
Exactly, it's.
It was line 20, well, line 20.
It's a little bit awkward syntax, what I.
2021.
But what that means is, I see, what that means is the flow of water will not be diverted from the existing, existing pattern does not particulate that well.
Uh huh, okay, because, you know, all right.
Okay.
I guess it could be made a little clearer.
So help him out with a sentence, then we'll.
I think the way you just explained it was good.
Yep.
That's all I had on that.
Okay.
Looks like they're not stating section R.
I got close. It duly require one hour of attendance at a meeting, we'll let it slide.
You test tomorrow.
I know. Groundwater.
What letter is that?
We're at the E.
That we just got today, I haven't looked at that.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to make a note that E is.
It's short.
Wait, can I see if I have notes on that?
Well, let's see if I have it on my. I don't have it on my, I've got to move it on.
This is Sunday. Sunday?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Wait, 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 wait.
So like, moved everything.
Maybe I didn't read it. I have X 66 of nine.
I have X66 on it.
I don't have, but basically it does everything in there.
Regardless, I don't think we're ready for groundwater.
But, I mean, don't we have kind of an additional wrinkle here with the applicant discussing with the village, you know, annexation? You know, if the, this, this section could potentially be completely rewritten? You know, this is all, this is all old information.
Yeah.
You know, where it says that the applicant determined that it would not be feasible to connect to the village water supply system.
I guess we just have to proceed as if we don't know any of that.
Well, this, it's a bit of a sidebar, but there is some interesting discussion to be had if the applicant does intend to pursue securing a municipal supply from the village. Is that the modification of the proposed project? We have to decide how that would be handled. It is possible you could go through the finding statement, be offered the opportunity to address that, and determine it does not have a significant impact because it's an existing water supply, and supplies the village and has adequate capacity to serve this project as well. The other wrinkle that follows with annexation, well, there's two possibilities. One is they could get the water supply from the village. My understanding is the village's law requires annexation in order to get water supply. My understanding is that that is driven by New York City legal requirements that limit the water supply to the village residents and to town districts. Can't supply a individual use that's by itself. So that would have to be addressed, and that would create some other issues that would have to be considered as well. It's in the village, what's owning it's all.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to find out if that's true, that there is enough water for the project from the village. I mean, that seems like something we might want.
Well, thanks, Dave.
If there's enough water in the system, there's a shutdown that's coming, too.
Oh, yeah.
The cost of that water is something else, I'm sure, that's a factor.
So should we think about that now, or just...
The town should develop its own wells and so on.
I think there's a, there's a lot of uncertainty regarding that proposal, my understanding, as to whether the village board will entertain it, whether, if it requires annexation, how that process would take place, and over what time, and whether or not there is some arrangement regarding the water supply that can be reached to allow the water supply without the annexation. All of that is not resolved.
Yeah.
So at this point, I think proceed forward with the application at hand.
Just out of curiosity, then, even though I was talking with Tim, so that we still be lead agency, would we work with like the village planning board, then? Because it's in the village? What a funny thing. No? Okay. It's curious, okay.
I'm not sure where and what would happen on that, but I think from...
I don't believe these things happen very often.
Yeah, I know, it's such a weird thing, we're simultaneously...
You'd be more happy with the village planning board, wouldn't you?
I've worked with them before. They sent me a letter of apology, so now we're good.
Look at every meeting and comments for two hours.
Exactly.
There, you know, there are speculation, there are things going around, everybody's seen or heard of it.
It kinda...
I just wanna, these are the facts that we have now, and I don't wanna put it off in abeyance that something in the future may change that. I'd rather do this and then throw it out.
It kinda makes our work a little complicated, and, you know, we're, in a way, we're being asked to spin our wheels here to review a project that's, that's now suddenly in flux.
I think we have to anticipate it either way, just go ahead and...
But what if we have a finding statement that...
So then we need a finding statement that, that discusses either outcome.
If it's a, well, we're just gonna go with the town, the town, the application to the town. I'm trying to decide how to answer Tim's question, and I think I need to think some more. Because at this point, there is not a formal application, there's a proposal, if the, they have to petition for annexation. So if an annexation petition is presented, that's an action that both the village and the town have to serve. The status of the planning board with respect to that action, it is relevant to this action that's under consideration by the board, but it raises some interesting questions as to whether the board would retain jurisdiction. If you no longer have an approval, you're no longer an involved agency. So if you're not the involved agency, you can't be the lead agency.
But what about the fact that the village is part of the town? So doesn't that kind of...
It's a different board.
They have their own planning board.
Well, I know they have their own planning board, but, but...
So if the applicant determines that it wishes to proceed on two tracks, consider the annexation, the water supply on one track, and continue with its approval process here before the planning board, you still have jurisdiction. And that raises the question, what do you do about the other track?
So why would, why would we spin our wheels like reviewing...
I'm sorry.
Why would we spin our wheels reviewing a section like this, as, you know, it almost seems like we need to table sections like this that are in flux and just focus on the ones that, you know, because even if we were able to do work on sections that are a little bit more clear, and if it seems like the village planning board takes over this project, then we just kind of give them the work that, that we've already done, that they can just easily use, as opposed to creating new work.
Well, I think it needs to be clarified with the applicant what their intention is in the first case. If they wish to proceed on two tracks, and they do wish to proceed with an approval from this board, the fact that they're also considering approval on track two is germane, but not, doesn't relieve you of your jurisdiction and your responsibility to continue reviewing the application. If they say, never mind, we're going to pursue the village water supply, that's our plan of action, then yes, that would affect your jurisdiction, but that is not, as I understand it, where they're at at this point. It would be helpful if we knew it's either track one or track two, but it is possible to proceed on two tracks at the same time.
Well, it seems like, just for now, like line 22, maybe we could just take that out. Like, "As applicant determined that it would not be feasible to connect to the village water supply system, blah, blah, blah." Because that just seems weird to have in a finding statement when we know that it's not true.
Well, I'm not sure the applicant is...
Oh, that is right, it could be true.
I would suggest, since everybody has not read groundwater, since it came out Sunday, we'll hold that one in abeyance. But I still believe it's the requirement for this board to come up with a finding statement until the project is pulled from our jurisdiction. So we gotta continue to work on this application while it's here, and we're under all the rules of an application that's here, so I think we just have to go with it. We could highlight, we can modify, if concrete information comes before us, for as long as we're the lead agency, and this is the application before us, we gotta review it. But E will hold off, too.
You know, but there is a question that I have in E that is unrelated to annexation. My numbers are all screwed up because I copy and pasted things into one 72-page document. But the paragraph that begins, "Construction activities will create approximately blank acres of impervious surface, primarily building footprints, roadways, and parking areas." I'd love to get a sense of how many acres of impervious surface, and then also compare that number to how many acres of impervious surface there would be without the density variance. So we could kind of compare those two things to get a sense of, of what we're accomplishing by supporting a density variance, which I think is...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What do you mean? Increase in building height and floor.
Building height variance?
Right. Because I think a density variance is a, is a good thing for our community, and that's generally why we would, as a planning board, support variances. So I just wanna see the difference between those two numbers.
One of the alternatives looks at a two-story
Yeah.
complex, and I believe there's a building calculation in that.
That's correct. If you look, if you look at DEIS and the alternatives, you can compare a per code layout, and he has all the numbers in there, impervious area, impervious variance, compare that to our project. The per code layout, he has 80 feet between the buildings, two stories, and spread out more. It goes into the woods more, all that kind of stuff.
But the question I have with that, though, is it seems like one of the reasons that we would support a density variance is because of the issues that Spider has raised, in that the density variance makes sense because we're encroaching less on wetlands, and because we're minimizing impervious surface.
By, excuse me, I'm building footprints alone, it's basically a 50% variance, because you go from two stories to three, so you're eliminating basically, 30, I forget, 30. It's 33% or change.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I'd use the word density variance, there's no variance related to density. A setback variance is requested to allow the allowable density on a smaller footprint. By going up and going closer together, you can provide a smaller footprint, less impervious surface.
That's in the DEIS and the old alternatives.
Right, I'm familiar with the three variances, but, so just, what you're suggesting is to be more clear in terms of describing that particular variance, it's a setback variance as opposed to a density variance?
Yeah, density variance would sound like that you're, granted, if the, the, would only allow a certain amount, if you wanna put more on, just terminology wise. What we're doing is we're gonna put the allowable density on a smaller footprint by getting here, there, is the here, there.
Yeah, I guess it's, it's not necessarily like density of bodies, but it's proximity of buildings, right? So, yeah.
Clustering.
I could say proximity variance, maybe, is a more accurate description.
Clustering is the more...
Clustering, okay.
Yeah.
So, the answer, though, I guess to the question, so we still would need a rough idea of the number of acres of impervious surface.
Sure.
But your, your kind of estimate is that we're reducing impervious surface with this clustering variance by half?
33%.
Oh, 33%.
Instead of, instead of two-story buildings, it's a three-story building, so...
33% would be four.
That would be the impervious surface for...
For the buildings, just the buildings themselves.
But the roadways didn't change.
And then you save on roadways, because the roadways...
Exactly, right, so that, I mean...
So if you look in the DEIS, you'll have, there's a table that compares impervious area, that we would call a conventional plan, without the variances in our plan. So one would say five acres, and we'd say three acres, and so on and so forth. So those numbers are available to, in that chart. Has that chart been updated? It hasn't been, it's back to the DEIS.
All our building...
What?
I mean, the SWIP is goddamn impervious area for what's being planned, so it's easy to check. The only thing that's, well, the only thing that was in flux, and we considered the table, that all the landbank parking would be built, as the worst case scenario. So, you know, we have a percentage less, assuming, not all be built, but for the table, we couldn't mix apples and oranges with this.
The items on, in the table are comparable, because they all use...
Exactly.
Right. But, but the number that you have for your three-story building won't necessarily be identical to what's in SWIP, because we've done some landbank parking, so reduced it. But I think, looking at your question on density, the table would probably give you the best indication of how much impervious surface we have in the three alternative, at least from a comparison point of view. It's not hard and fast, because landbank back parking took some of that impervious surface out.
I guess the, the reason that I'm also bringing this up is because of the, this idea of clustering variance, I think it makes sense in that the community can hang our hat on, there is an advantage for our community to do this clustering variance. So we have a smaller impervious surface footprint, and...
Less vegetation.
Less vegetation disrupted, right, less encroachment on wetlands, sure. So, so what exactly are we hanging our hat on for the other two variances? That's what, that's what I'm...
What's the other two?
The other two are height and number of stories.
So the height allows us to do three stories.
Well, no.
I understa...
The height allows a pitched roof instead of a flat, which, the, the number of stories allows two versus three living stories, but we technically wouldn't have to go for the height if we flattened the roofs, but that was something to keep consistent or more consistent with the look of the rest of the town. We're asking to go above, and it's just on the pitched roof piece of it, that actually goes above the height.
Okay, so three stories is fine code-wise.
No, that's, that's why there's three variances. One variance is two and a half stories is code.
Right.
Which technically would be two living stories, which means that all of the buildings would be two stories of the living area. So the third story condenses the number of buildings required, because basically you take one of the stories and keep putting on top, and then you have less buildings.
Right, so to me, the, the challenge I have with that, then, is basically pursuing a variance to accommodate your plan. Like, what, what does the community benefit? How does the community benefit?
Less impervious surface.
Yeah.
Because there's less buildings, and less building footprint.
Look, it minimizes intrusions into the wetland buffer and into the wetlands as well, because it would spread out further in.
No, so that's the story piece, the height piece, the community benefits by visual, the, the project looks nicer with the pitched roofs, and it fits more in tune with the rest of the town.
Yeah, one way to think about it is if you look at the number of buildings on the plan at three-story, we'd have to have one-third more buildings to get the same square footage, and that one-third more square footage would be more impervious area.
Yeah, but that, that's making the assumption that the project has to be of a certain size.
Yeah, we have to start somewhere. We have to start somewhere. It has to be of a certain size, because that certain size would fit on the RVs that are there. If you will, you could go into the woods, and we've had extensive conversations with his underwriting appeals about this, and you could develop in the woods, and put buildings there, you could have all flat roofs, and make this a totally conformant under the zone, and under the, and under...
But how, how could you, how could...
Full report.
A lot of the woods is a wetland, so we could go in there with enough two-story buildings, cut all that down, create impervious surfaces and roads through them, and wetland areas, just getting closer to the wetlands. Right now, we're, there's 10 acres back there, that we're not cutting down a single tree of, we're leaving it.
That technically you could, because it's, it's not
It's not...
land that would be considered something that we wanna protect. So, I mean, I think that's important.
No, a lot of the land is.
What?
A lot of that land is, it has environmental value.
Well, it has environmental value, but does it have value related to encroaching on wetlands?
Not specifically.
Not specifically?
It still has other environmental value.
Well, we're trying to do is keep the biggest block of woods available, it's the biggest habitat. So by getting the variances, we can do that.
Yeah, clustering is, is something that we've written into our land use, and don't think that we have to take a look at clustering on any type of subdivision that we receive and going forward, because of some of those values that we talked about. More open space, more greenery on it, so this is why that then, in order to... More open space, more greenery on it, so this is why then, in order to bring that clustering, it brings in some of the requirements for variances on it. So there's a height variance, there's a story variance, and then there's a building distance variance. Distance is also to enable more clustering, even more open space on it. The story variance is basically to allow smaller footprint for the buildings, and the height variance is, we can talk about architectural review, or how the buildings look at, basically putting in a peak roof gives you a little bit more flexibility than a flat roof on buildings.
I just, I think these explanations are perfectly fine. I would just, I would like to see, like, any sort of discussion regarding variances, it framed in terms of, well, we are, you know, potentially suggesting this variance because it supports the community as follows. Like, I think that's important in terms of any variance discussion.
I think that your draft, though, does touch on all those issues.
No. I don't think it does.
Let me just say, when I went through the ecology section last night, one of the interesting things was the extent to which the variances, by helping the developed area be as small as possible, not only protects wetlands, it facilitates protection of the wooded areas, and it maintains some degree of continuity between the habitat areas that are located there, so that species can go back and forwards and...
Contagious.
It provides a suite of benefits.
So could we make that more explicit in the findings, in the then?
I mean, I've read the sections, I just didn't feel like that resonated clearly enough.
I will highlight that perhaps a little bit more in the ecology section. I will also, you haven't seen it yet, but there'll be an introduction that says, here's the plan, and this is how it's structured. I will try to put that in as well, to explain it.
Okay, anything else on E, the section we're now reviewing? No, that's good. That's kind of...
That's the other one he sent today, or yesterday.
Oh, an F2, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll hold off questions. We did air quality G last time, and again, we'll come back to that, unhonored. We did transportation. We did send that question out to our consultant. Did everybody see his response back? Okay. Question, on the traffic study that was done, was any prior, any approvals done after that traffic study that we, as a board, may have approved? Would that have affected the traffic study as a whole? I'm thinking like the ridge on 32, I don't know if that was 100% occupied before that traffic study was done. So therefore, that additional traffic onto that road, because I guess the traffic report was done in 2010, and since 2010, there was numerous projects approved in the town that had effect, that would affect the traffic patterns.
The last building in the ridge was occupied two years ago.
Okay.
I can remember the time they got their CO on it now, and that was the last single building, so I think it's had to be close to the rest of it being occupied.
So therefore, it was occupied, the project was occupied after that traffic study was done?
It should have been. Yeah, what we always have to do, what's required in traffic studies, to put in a growth rate. The growth rate is for unknown situations. If that was a known situation, it's in there already, then you put in a growth rate for unknown situations. So if that project had approval, and there was going to be a certain amount of buildup, that would be in the base. If you don't know about a project at all, then you have to put a fudge factor in there for the projects that may come in and get approved in the meantime. It's called a growth rate, when you add one percent or one and a half percent of year to the base, to account for those additional projects. So there hasn't been a huge project that put things out of kilter.
Well, the ridge is seventy-four apartments, it's a figure of hundred...
See, again, that was a known, was that known in 2000?
Yeah.
So that should be in there with the study, saying, okay, there was so much under traffic, but we know these seventy-four more apartments are going to be built, so we got to put that in here right now. And then on top of that, you put the growth rate for unknown projects. So if it was, again, it was approved project at the time, and that data goes right in there, right off the bat. It fills the gap, if you want. Then you put the growth rate in to account for unknown projects.
It was probably approved by the village well before that.
At least five years ago, not more.
That would be a known, whatever they do with traffic study, they put in whatever known additions, and it could be cumulative. I've seen, you know, was it crossroads? I think we had every addition that we did before they did the traffic study. You know, anything that was planned or before the board or anything else like that was added into it. Some of them didn't come to fruition, but they were added in when the traffic study was done.
Okay.
Okay.
Your traffic.
Yeah. Okay, UCAT service section. Been thinking a lot, as I always do, about the loop bus not running on the weekends. So I think that section's been really improved from the previous version about the UCAT, but I really just feel, I don't think there's really a solution we'll come to. But I feel like we've done a kind of crappy thing in trying, working really hard to reduce parking spaces, and disincentivize students bringing cars to the project, when this is 30 minutes away from any supermarket or any place to get food, and on the weekends, which is when students don't have class, they can't get to, there's no public transportation whatsoever. It's 20 degrees below zero out there. I don't know, it just seems terrible. I don't think we should put in more parking spots and encourage people to drive, but it seems that, I like, I wonder if we could all brainstorm some, it seems like it's the responsibility, at some point, we have to have a responsibility on applicants working in conjunction with the town or something, to ensure that there's somewhat more of a public transportation system. Because, I don't know what the solution is, but I think it's pretty crappy.
Well, there's a couple of easy solutions. I think if they just hire a van, you could go around periodically.
I thought about that, yeah.
Just, you know, drive a van every half hour to stop a char.
Yeah, I mean, I brought this up before, and I know the applicant said it's not officially feasible to, you know, pay for another loop bus, which I know is, you know, that would be a considerable expense. But yeah, I mean, that's another idea.
But there is that letter from Gail Gerler, asking for financial support for the loop bus from the applicant.
Well, that just says that they want to make sure that they pay for any costs associated with increasing the length of it.
Length, not weekend, right.
Which they dropped a stop, you know, it seems to me, in order to accommodate the bus system. That's another thing that it's being stretched beyond its capacity, blah, blah, but they say that there'll be more taxes and things. But nothing addresses the weekend issue, which, I mean, I don't know if you guys have ever been poor, but I have been poor. And when you can't go to get groceries and you're walking a shopping cart home, your life sucks, you know? And when you're in college, that's kind of when you're poor, and you're walking a shopping cart home on Main Street in four feet of snow, and I think it's, I think it's crappy. I don't know, I mean, I don't know if it's not a problem we're going to solve tonight, but maybe we could discuss the van projects, you know?
I'll make a note of that one.
I know I've brought this up about 50 times, but I think I gotta keep on with it.
Do you guys, do you guys have any sort of transportation accommodations or other sites?
Yeah, that's a good question. Well, I know RIT is closer.
Is Rochester, what's the one that's a mile from RIT?
RIT.
Is that one closer to the town, I feel, or city?
No, I'd say further away.
Okay. I mean, Rochester is a city, though, so you'd think it has more public transportation options. I don't think so.
Not in Henryetta.
Yeah.
It's not Rochester, right? Everybody says Rochester, it's out some highway.
It's on them.
That's about all I can say about that. But let's talk about it more.
Okay. So when do we talk about it more? Isn't this our last time to talk about these things?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
I put it down. I got to eat, and I got pan fried. Land use and zoning, Jay, is a new area that we have not talked about yet. And besides everything being page one of seven, did anybody have any?
Well, I know, I mean, I have notes in here that Eileen sent that are just red, red comments.
Well, again, there's stuff about the municipal water supply, which I guess we just have to move forward on as if nothing's happened.
But this is a question related to that. This is, it's a paragraph that begins, "The RV zoning district regulations do require", let me try to help with how far down it is.
Page two?
Yeah, I guess it's still in the first, the first section.
Yeah, it's beginning, top of page two, "The RV zoning district regulations".
Right, so, in this sentence, and this is related to annexation, it says, "However, that option was determined to be infeasible for a variety of reasons, including provisions of the village's code that require property outside the village to petition for annexation in order to receive service, and substantial increases in the city's water rates." I don't understand what that's referring to, or how that works with this sentence. Substantial increases to the city's water rates.
There's three factors that I think were, at one point, disincentives to pursue a village supply. First, that there would be annexation required, that would put the, put the project into the village, new zoning, and so on.
Sure.
Second was that the village system is in an uncertain state because of the need to develop a backup supply that will be the supply for a considerable period of time, 2016 or so.
2016, 2017, right.
Which means, A, they have to worry whether or not the village will do that, and B, the village has to consider whether it wants to, in larger, expand its distribution requirement in time it's looking for groundwater. To some extent, that may be resolved if groundwater exploration works out, but that's not certain at this point, and I believe the developer was interested in maximizing serving, which means developing a private supply that could be addressed, that would be within its control. And the water rates, as I recall, there was, they were surprising, 2012, when the water rate was finally calculated for the project, in terms of...
Expected use, or, yeah.
The cost.
The cost.
The cost of the village water supply is much more than the average cost of water supplies.
Oh, how much the village charges its residents.
How it charges its residents, how it charges out of...
I know it charges town folks a lot more than it charges its residents, sure.
My understanding is it now has a tiered system, which charges institutions a, the highest rate of all.
Right.
And the city itself is going to double the upstate charges within, according to a five-year schedule.
Oh, this is New York City?
Yeah.
Okay, that was confusing to me. That's why I was like, city's water rates.
When I say city, I mean New York City.
There you went.
Okay, we'll add New York City.
So it's the village's water rates, and then just uncertainties regarding the city's water rates?
No, certainties. It will go up approximately 100%.
Okay.
But yes, uncertainty regarding the water supply from the equity.
And substantial increases in the city's water rates, okay, so, yep.
Yeah, I typed in New York City's water rate.
Yep.
The Kipsey's on the one.
Or maybe it's the border water supply is more correct.
Yeah, the D is D.
I don't know if it's D.
I think it is the border water.
Border water supply is the...
New York City border water supply, I'll take care of it.
There, great.
I have a note that I'm going to pick up in the site plan, but what we're doing on reserve, on landbank parking, site-wise, and we'll talk about that. What is and what isn't going to be there from a disturbance point of view.
I have a question about that, actually. I'm looking at, gee, I can't tell which page, because they're all page one of seven, but it's a big fat paragraph about a third of the way in. It says, "In mitigation for the possibility that future development of reserve parking areas may impact adjacent wetlands, the applicant is proposed to enhance and maintain wetlands' vegetation and protect the wooded area and high-value habitats from disturbance." You know, I'm not really sure about the actual value of tinkering with the vegetation in the existing wetlands. I can kind of see how that's not, that's not part of the plan.
Nothing yet.
Oh, okay. So this is the wetlands vegetation in the stormwater retention ponds?
Did you give us, what the, what the top of the paragraph?
What's at the top of the page? It starts out, "The RV zoning district..."
Oh, that one.
So let me see. It's the second page, and it's near the bottom of the second page, and it's the stuff between lines 43 and 47.
Oh, okay.
But it says, "May impact adjacent wetlands." And indeed, some of the reserve parking does encroach on the buffers for those adjacent wetlands, so the words here gave me the impression that there's been a proposal to enhance and maintain wetlands vegetation of those adjacent wetlands, which, you know, seems not advisable if you've got an existing wetland. Disturbing them doesn't usually help anything.
But there's no plan to disturb the rest.
We just need to fix that sentence, then, right, George?
I think it's the vegetation in the wetland buffer.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So vegetation in the wetland buffer, but then that mitigation goes away when the parking areas do get used, the reserve parking areas. So that's a potential but disappearing mitigation.
No, we're not planning any enhancements in what potentially could be a...
Uh-huh, so that's just going to be mowed lawn or something.
We'll put gravel under it, because we have this timeframe, people moving in and out, so that'll be able to accommodate those cars.
Yeah.
So it'll be green, but it won't be...
Right. You know, there's some very nice sort of plastic grids that I've seen installed. My brother has that. He was required to do it in his home in New Jersey for their SWIP thing. for their SWIP things, and it's actually remarkably effective. You wouldn't know it was there, but you don't sink enough to your hug. So, uh... It does work.
Yeah, it's leaves them as well.
Yeah, but, you know, that... You know, the enhance and maintain wetlands vegetation just doesn't... I don't know.
I don't think they contemplated intrusion into the wetlands. What I understood it to be is...
Right, it's into the buffer.
If there's a space between a parking area and the buffer, and they propose to extend it. Yeah.
Which is the buffer.
Buffer. The buffer.
Right.
The only thing they're doing is buffer.
Right. But, you know, the business with enhancing and maintaining wetlands vegetation just doesn't belong there enough. So could we take that out?
Yep.
Should be what?
Buffer vegetation.
Buffer.
Uh-huh. But didn't you just say that... Is that the remaining buffer vegetation that's not part of the parking? The reserve parking?
Yeah, there's... There's usually at least 50 feet that's not the given area that we have, potentially land bank parking. So you got the 50-foot vegetated area that we would... We planned to enhance right off day one. Then next to that's the parking, in some cases, the... The land bank parking area. So that initial enhancement would be done in the 50-foot area right through day one. The other, you just consider it as grass, or it's not... It's not... It's not a part of a long-term mitigation. It's, you know, it's... It has grass.
All right, but basically what you're getting at in that sentence, George, is that he's gonna, um... Work on a buff... Buffer vegetation.
Well, maybe you should say native vegetation, or natural vegetation, or something like that, instead of wetlands vegetation. You're not messing with the wetlands.
Say buffer vegetation.
The other general question is, how do we know where it's going and what it's going to be, other than a...
We have plants.
Yeah, so it's on the plant.
Yeah, we have plants to show all the planting, and all the treatments, and all those things.
What... Is there a generic... It was just shown on the plant.
I showed it. I showed it.
And... And these enhanced plants do a better job than just what grows all by themselves?
Well, the area we're talking about specifically right now is the abandoned apple tree. And everybody's kind of agreed that really isn't a high ecological value of it.
Yeah.
So if we can put in some planting materials that will draw birds and other wildlife, will provide an ecological enhancement, although it's general in some cases. You know, you could consider a better buffer than the existing buffer that's a homogeneous apple tree that's full of poison ivy. So...
Yeah, I see that. And I actually, um... Sort of perversely would prefer to leave the poison ivy as a wetland buffer, because nobody will mess with a wetland provided by, you know, protected by... By me, poison ivy. Also, oddly enough, poison ivy is a very important, um... Food source for birds, the berries over the winter. You know, a lot of people don't like poison ivy, but if you're not supposed to be tromping around in the wetlands, it's a good idea to have it. You know, I can recommend some other soromy things, too.
Okay.
But thank you.
Yeah, we'll fix that up.
That clarifies that sentence for me.
Anything else now? Again, um... Anything substantial or significant that you wanna... And again, if you look at some of these things, um... When you get to the endpoints and mitigation on it, like J four and J seven, you know, incorporated modification, building design, architectural, during fight's final site plan review. We still have to do that. So it shows up here, you're saying. It's still something that's on our checklist, that we still have to deal with.
Yeah, I think I added, and I discussed it with George, the very last mitigation, or second to that, J six, entering into developers' agreements, blah, 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 for inspection and monitoring of construction activities. It just has to be clear that it's at the applicant's expense, so that the town will be burdened with ongoing costs.
I have a question about, um... I don't know how to reference it, but the paragraph says, "Representatives of SUNY and the foundation have stated that the objective of the proposed development is support ecologist's efforts to reduce multiple bed unit occupancies, et cetera, et cetera." You know, and this kind of relates to our community section, but I don't... You know, the SUNY foundation also earns rental income from this ground lease, so this is not merely a project where the objective is to, uh... Detriple. You know, as... As has been suggested, this is a... This is a revenue generator for the SUNY foundation. They charge Will Morait money to... To rent this land.
Which is permissible.
Which is absolutely permissible, but, um... You know, I think that's one of the challenges that our community has, is that SUNY is saying, "We absolutely need this project, because this supports our college." But because we have no idea how much the SUNY foundation is charging for their ground lease, so if they are charging a significant amount of money for their ground lease, maybe that's what, you know, has created this situation where the applicant, um... Is looking to attain a pilot. So, you know, in a... In a way, that lever of how much the rental cost of the land is affects, you know, affects the economic feasibility of this project for this applicant.
That's true, too. The section here talking about land use, that discussion relates to... As I recall, was that either the second or third public hearing on the FEIS where there were representatives of the college and tenants. And they actually went through an explanation of how they determined that they need a certain number of beds in order to reach a certain goal, which, in their view, makes them competitive with other institutions that they compete against.
I'm... All that logic makes perfect sense to me.
That's all this paragraph...
Well, that's... That's what that... This paragraph is referring to, but the way it's currently constructed, it's not... It's not completely accurate, because it says this... Have stated that the objective of the proposed development.
We are on land use. We are on page one.
The fourth.
The fourth page, and it's line 25.
And there's a reason that this says that's what they said, because that is the argument. If I... For quite some time, it was just stated, "We need this many units." That was actually an explanation, I thought, that the board can understand it, as far as why or that number comes from, and how it relates to SUNY's overall objectives and maintaining their stature. The fact that they make money off the lease is true, too, but doesn't, I believe, relate to this specific...
Okay, so it might not relate to this section, but that concept has to be baked into the... Okay.
It may be appropriate to mention.
I had the impression that Mike Moriello just now said that the zoning, the RV zoning permitted so many units, and that's the number of units they were gonna get, however they could do it.
The zoning in the RV district actually... Actually permits far in excess of the units that the applicant is...
Uh-huh, okay, fine. Yeah, I just heard you wrong.
So I made a note, Tim, talking about the foundation and the... This thing, and when we get to the community impacts, okay?
But there is a reason that it's at 730... 732 beds currently. I mean, in the past, it was... It was north of 1,000, so it must have come down for other reasons, not just what's permissible based on RV zoning.
I think that first, um... Development, as I remember, that's been several years ago now, they were doing quite a bit of cutting through wetlands for access, and right on top of wetlands. There's no buffers, because they were federal wetlands at the time. The buildings that I remember, some were five-story also. It's more like one building.
But I just think it's then important to, you know, it's not just that we're looking at a blank slate and saying, "Well, how many beds could we fit on this based on RV zoning?" There are a variety of variables that have gone into creating this number.
Tim, are you saying... You're saying the narrative should say that it's been reduced from the original?
Sure. Yeah, I'm just clarifying.
This gets into the... Those plans never came to town, they were all in the village. The six-story or five-story buildings?
Uh, no, those were... That was a real early application, I've... At least five years ago, it was like a pre-application. We saw that a couple times, that layout. Kept getting better. But it was a different application.
It was a different application. Those were those.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that the board can hang their hat on this, we have this conventional plan. The conventional plan takes into account all of the environmental factors. You wouldn't have those necessarily in a calculation format for every person, or someone informed. So if you do a layout that confirms the code, that does establish a fair, um... Density for... For the alternate project. That's how clustering normally would work. You know, because you can't do clustering, because you can't... It's not allowed here on the zone, but typically you would do a layout that shows what density is per code, and then you say to yourself, "Can we do something better for the environment here by squishing it together?" And is that worth allowing the irrigations to allow you to squish it together? So that's the whole... So the bottom line here is the density by the conventional plan is a fair representation of the density that you could build on the site. And then you look to improve it through using clustering principles.
Sure, and the unique characteristics of the particular property.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Well, I guess I'm just wondering, do you want me to insert some reference to the original concept, being 1,100 whatever? With more disturbance, or...
Which paragraph are you referring to?
The paragraph we just visited, representatives stated. Were we just talking about how we came to that determination at 730? To realize is what is necessary?
Yeah, I mean, the only reason I brought up that paragraph is the idea that the SUNY foundation has a singular objective. I wouldn't... I don't think that is... Is accurate. I think they have more than one objective, and I would just want that wording to be more clear.
Rather than "the" objective, "an" objective?
Yeah, I'm sure. I don't need that statement.
Because that... Because I'll give you the mission statement next, on the foundation.
Okay, so change it to "and."
I... I'm not sure if, you know, downsizing of the project to the density. I think we talked about it somewhere else.
Yeah, that can include... Maybe that can be included in this discussion of why we're looking at different variances. You know, the... Along the lines of what Doug is suggesting, is that when you look at a piece of property, your first pass-through is the code, and what can you build based on the code, assuming it's a blank slate? And then you have to, you know, add additional overlays that are relevant to the particular property.
Okay, there's the rationale for the variances is on the preceding second page one, between 34 and 46.
I... I know they're all kind of there, but I just really would feel much more comfortable with every time there's a variance. To me, it's like the idea of a variance has to go with the community... The community benefits because... This variance makes sense, because the community is going to achieve the following.
Well, we can say what our opinion on the variances are, or why we think variances make sense, maybe from a community point of view.
Right, right, right. Well, I mean, I feel like once we have laid it out, then we could say, "Yeah, those are important community benefits."
Well, this is jive with the five questions, or whatever it is that the ZBA has to ask with regard to any variance?
It would be what we would send to the ZBA as far as what a planning board recommendation was, if we pull it out of my statement. And, you know, we could say where we believe, for a condensed point, where it is a community benefit on it, and, um... Or what, probably can address each of those three, and that to the... Because the ZBA won't rule on the variances until we finish the findings, so...
The five criteria, too, Lynn's question is a good one. Does the five criteria do point to the benefit to the applicant? It's actually one of the criteria, not the community. It's the benefit to the applicant, and the benefits of the applicant. Although I think there's numerous community benefits that you discuss here tonight, but that is one of the criteria.
Okay. Anything else on land use? I would like to skip K for now, because I think we'll take all night on that. So I just want to hold off on that.
Community with a K.
Well, that section needs to be released to us, if something's going to be...
Still be worked on. We might run it through one more time, and then probably be able to release it. I just want to give the board members opportunity of anything significant to get at, George, so we can incorporate it, so we know this is... Okay. I'm a bit of a blind, because I didn't bring my...
Do you want noise?
I thought I had that with me.
This place, M.
Yeah, there we go. H, there from... I skipped H. We didn't do H, did we? Yeah. No, there it is. Stay with community.
I don't have any comments at all.
Okay. Okay.
I don't think I do.
What's, what's this in? H is in Karen?
Yeah.
What's, what is it about?
We bad.
Here we go. Okay. Back in business again. Stay put too many things together. Okay.
Oh, so, yeah, in, are we doing H or what? I guess point of clarification in the second paragraph, under existing conditions, in addition, the present owner does not wish to conduct agricultural activities on the property. That's the SUNY Foundation, right?
Yes.
Okay. I just think that would be.
Actually, gossip.
Because, you know, a lot of people have no idea what's what.
Okay.
I, I did have a... Okay. I did, I actually had a few things on this. Some of them, I think you'll, so in the, the paragraph that says the applicant proposes, under potential impacts?
Line 27.
The applicant proposes to acquire easement, blah, blah, blah. You know, just for, you know, as we were talking about earlier, the idea of referencing, you know, the broader sections, you know, that's a paragraph where you would probably reference the water section, right?
Yes.
And then, then the, two paragraphs down, the removal and encapsulation of top layer of soil, that's a reference to the soil section. Right? And then here's a question, another couple of paragraphs down. It is noted that the master plan contemplates a transitional.
Line 7, next page.
Something traditional agriculture uses to more intensive. And then we talk about, at the same time, the town has zoned lands along the Walkill River into a floodplain zone that encourages greater use of those lands for agricultural purposes. I would just like to know, is that like a one-for-one trade or, you know, that's, that's kind of a, an endearing concept, but, you know, what are, what, how does it work? Just like a little detail. You know, if we, if we forfeited this ag land, but now we're rezoning some other land, that's going to be.
Did we take 50 acres here and then did we do 50 acres over there?
Yeah, or even something close, like, did we take 50 acres here and then we did one acre here?
It's just two things are happening together.
Right.
Contemporaneously, that sort of balance out because floodplain zone really restricts the nature of activities. At the same time, the land south seems to be upgrade in terms of the intensity of use that's being contemplated. So we have the fortuitous benefit of offsetting each other to some extent.
I think conceptually, that sounds fantastic. I just wanted to have a rough, like, as Mike was saying, like, what's the ratio though? Like, if we, or, or, you know, I, I realize it's kind of like a work in progress, you know, regarding master plans, but like, we're trading apples for oranges or apples or what?
The master plan that's doing that. Those that simply to.
Some sort of rezoning of floodplains?
Floodplains have been rezoned. That means agriculture is more likely to happen there, and I think you see that now. The land south, just as economically, I think, going to be driven into higher intensity uses. Those two things are just happening without real relationship with each other, except that they sort of balance out in a world scale.
I think they balance out conceptually. I just want to have an idea of how do they balance out size-wise?
Oh, I think you're talking like 1,200 acres or more compared with 42 or 50.
Cool. Then I, I just want a rough idea, that's it.
Yeah, all you have to do is look at the blue there. Oh, it's way more than 1,200 acres, the floodplain of the Walkill River.
Yeah, I just kind of disconnected it.
Numbers you don't know, okay. All right.
And then proposed mitigation in this section, H2. You know, again, we're talking about this community gardens thing. I think we talked about it up in the soil section or somewhere else. H3, I just felt was kind of goofy. I don't even know why it's in here.
I know, yeah, that was kind of funny. I guess, how does it hurt?
How does it hurt? But, but I, I just don't.
What does it say?
I don't like the idea of just putting fluff in this document for no reason. Like, how would you even, how would you even measure it? You know, it's the same thing with H4. How is it measured or enforced? You know, that was my comment about those things. I think these all are like really adorable ideas, but, but why are, unless they have some teeth, why are they in here?
It says that how they'll provide information about.
H3?
H3 and H4.
So I mean, it can be as simple as the applicant making provision for someone to come from, for Helen, once a year to instruct people on what they can do to plant.
But, but it kind of goes back to the, the beginning question is like, well, are we saying that we're requiring this to happen once a year? Or we want some sort of procedure? You know, otherwise, it's just like, this is just taking up space.
It'd be easier if the plantings themselves, that the applicant is planning on doing, had these qualities and leave it at that.
Well, I think this is about the community gardens.
Well, I'm just talking about, well, edible landscape. I don't know edible landscape. I, I think in terms of birds eating the landscape and other things, but.
I don't like it. It's weird.
Well, you probably can buy.
It just, it just opens, it's like, how is it related? I'm sure someone did ask for it, but why is this in here? We could have asked for several other things.
Well, it's a linkage between agricultural, that it was agricultural land, and now it's housing, and it's making that connection more explicit.
To Tim's point, two things. One is if there is other things that will help mitigate the impact that should be in here, we need to know what those are, which is put them in. The second is if, if it is not artfully phrased, but there is utility to the general concept of having Cornell help people do these community gardens, then what we need is to operationalize it so that it can be accomplished. Once a year, there will be coordination with the cooperative extension, so we'll come in and offer a class, or offer resources, offer pamphlets. There are various things they could do. To just say we're going to have community gardens means people have to go out, figure out what to plant, how to do it, what to do over the summer.
I guess what I'm struggling with is like, are we asking the applicant to do this? Are we mandating that they do this? Like, why is this in here?
How did this appear? Yeah. How, did we write that?
Are we reserving a place to have community gardens if people want it? Or are we saying there will be?
The community gardens were proposed by the applicant, the DIS. In the course of town board review, it came out as a town board comment that there could be some more activity, some more proactive education opportunities to.
Since people can't go and get food.
I mean, like the CSA, even letting people know there are CSAs in the area. Those kind of things can to some extent be conceptualized as offsetting the loss of agricultural land. If you don't believe it's going to be productive, or useful, or mitigation, then yes, it should be removed. If you need, if you think it could be, but isn't operationalized in a way that will be, then help me figure out ways to get that accomplished. So I mean, if you said, you know, Cornell Cooperative will provide information on a regular basis, once a year, provide a class, whatever it is that will help people use the community garden and to use it for its intended use, you know, that, I can work along those lines if you wish. But that's what I need help with if you don't see how it's going to work. So let me know if there's an issue and to the extent I think there's something that needs to be done to improve it, tell me what your idea is.
You have community gardens that, you don't have any gardens up there at the RIT?
We don't have B gardens.
You have gardens that you maintain.
There's no report.
I think all we're looking here is that, you know, to the extent, like our community garden in New Falls, to the extent that people want a garden, that they would sign up with somebody to say, okay, these are the spaces, this is the area you have, and we'll bring somebody in late winter, you know, and talk about the nest.
We have a very good model in the gardens for nutrition.
Did, wait, did that?
This isn't something proposed, Adam. This was requested of us.
This was requested of you, right. And so, I mean, like I said, I think it's a perfectly nice idea, but I don't understand why it's in the finding statement. And, and it's just like, it's the same thing with this, with this idea, the applicant will provide information about, you know, CSAs and local agricultural. Again, it's a great, nice idea, but why is that in our finding statement? It'd be the same thing in the community section. The, the applicant is going to encourage people to do unto others, you know? It's like, be a good neighbor. Like, why, why is this in our finding statement?
The fundamental nexus is this loss of agricultural land. And there's a question as to whether there are things which can be done to mitigate the impact of that loss.
So unless, but unless we. Okay, so, so that's a perfectly fine response, but then we need to add some operational teeth to it. We need to say the applicant.
What can be in our monitoring, or, you know, making sure that's set up, you know?
So then we're going to require them to hire a certified person who reviews CSA, distribution, information.
You call a Cornell Cooperative extension, you get a master gardener to come down and give a class.
You guys have a meeting room, right? You have some, you have a meeting room? So one Saturday in March, somebody comes from Cornell and says, this is if you want to grow stuff, this is how it works.
There it is, great.
So this is, this is something that we can have.
Right. The town, the town.
Is this, is this something that you're wanting to do?
Well, we're going to see, we're going to see.
I see how it mitigates, yeah.
What we're going to see on the site plan are areas that are quote-unquote gardens. You know.
If you want to consider this as a.
And what we're looking at is, what you're writing in here is that the applicant's going to allocate these gardens to somebody somehow and bring somebody in once a year.
We're going to bring them in?
Yeah, and they come in free.
You coordinate if it's, if Cornell, Cornell, they come in and this is, there's also.
So then we're requiring their management to engage with Cornell annually to have this thing.
Yes, and here's why. Because if you have community gardens, it makes sense to.
I don't, I don't understand why it's in here.
Well, I don't need your, you're such as, but, you know.
It sounds like a complication though, because what do you do when you have somebody who insists on spraying everything with an herbicide? To get their garden to grow right or something like that. I mean, in terms of a wildlife habitat mitigation, they're great. I've never met a woodchuck who preferred gardening, at least then, you know, whatever's available by the side of the road. But, you know, people have different ideas about what they want to do in their gardens too, and it often serves as a vector for the introduction of alien invasive species.
There's a lot of different facets to this garden.
I can imagine what can be grown in a garden too. I, I, it's a great, great discussion points, but on a scale of one to 10, I think, you know, do we want it in or out? I mean, that, that's where I'm at on it.
It, the first question is, are there impacts which should be mitigated? And then the question is, what kind of mitigation is necessary to mitigate those impacts? The land is being changed from agricultural use to dormant agricultural use. The agricultural soils are on the site, generally will not be available for that use. If that's a significant impact, what is needed for mitigation? If you believe it's not a significant impact, then no mitigation is necessary or required.
No, I think here we're talking about, there would be opportunities for the students to have a garden.
I'm happy with the mitigation.
So there were a number of students.
I just want a place for like, plant some carrots.
Yeah.
Do, do SUNY students elsewhere on the campus have anything like a garden?
Yeah, I think there is a garden thing, yeah.
There were a number of students who showed up at the DIS hearing, and I think it's something.
Yeah, it was mentioned.
The FEIS talked about agriculture and how they.
And there are gardens on the other side of the property on SUNY. We had somebody in from the college talking about, you know, west of the site, where they did do some agricultural or gardening or growing. One of the professors.
Well, you have to go to Cornell, get this guy.
Okay, so this section's great.
Except take out Cornell.
That was such as, you could put in here, for example.
If you have thoughts about how to modify this, feel free to, any suggestions, and I'll put something in for the next one or take something out for this one.
For H6, where it says there are no known subsurface drainage tiles or outlets on the project site, is this referenced in the stormwater section?
That's existing conditions. There's no field tiles there for the orchard.
Well, if there's no known tiles, the mitigation is, if we find tiles, this is probably due.
I, I mean, I just read this stuff for the first time about, you know, in terms of this document, I hadn't seen any other discussion of if we find any old tiles. Well, no, no, I know it's, we've, we've seen it previously, but I'm saying it's, it's nowhere else in this document. It seems like it's just popping up here in this.
It would be better in.
In this ag section, and it feels like a stormwater. Or it can be in both, it can be in both. That, that, I just, maybe it should be referenced in stormwater and ag.
Well, let's put, let's put it in both.
Yes, we can always, that's a great clipping.
Okay. Anything else in agriculture? L.
L?
L came out on the 20th of 5/26 PM. Visual Resources.
I wish I'd been around to see these balloons. I was excited, but I asked them, and they said they happened and I never found them.
We had to see the happened-in balloons. It was freezing cold.
Oh, boy.
And the wind was blowing 90 miles an hour.
Visual Resources, it's IFW9037, passion.
Oh, yeah.
What was that, IFW9?
The first L.
The last, the last letter is L.
I'm still finding L.
Fourth page, dot, standard.
What is, what is the name of L? L?
Visual L, Visual Resources, existing conditions as roughly.
I have not studied.
Okay, so we'll postpone L.
Yeah, I didn't do L yet either.
So we got E, L. We're going to get a word out of this one. Cultural Resources is M, half a page, and nothing's being mitigated.
I'm okay with that section.
Pretty thing about farms.
Yeah, I reviewed M, and I was, I had no comments.
Solid waste?
I had comments on that one. Because we're discussing how the, the projects will be, recycling plans will be complement to what the college is already doing, but the college is composting, and, you know, they use Royal carding, they do composting.
Oh, and dorms.
They don't have any, but they don't have kitchens in the dorms.
Right.
So this property has kitchens, so it seems like composting would be more feasible here, and composting would be in line with, with both, with both what ACRRA is doing, the Ulster County Resource Recovery Agency, and what the college is doing. So providing some sort of, and, and, you know, without a doubt, I completely agree that the project should not, there's, there's... The applicant does not currently anticipate the operation of a food waste compost facility on the project site. And, and that's, that's not, you know, I think what composting is about. They should definitely not have windrows of compost and, and situations where they're trying to convert compost into topsoil or gardening soil. It should just be trucked out, just as it is, you know, Royal carding takes away the, the compostables, you know, at, at a few of the buildings on campus.
Well, our recycling center is going into the composting business.
Well, they have compost, and so does, so does ACRRA. They spent $50,000 on that.
It's just a matter of getting it there.
Yep.
So basically, what we're looking for is some mechanism to pick up the compost from the site?
Yeah, this will be a huge, this will be a huge selling point for the students. Students love green stuff, they love composting.
It's just another bin, and then, you know, just a few years back.
It's just a bin.
Yeah.
So under proposed conditions, line 1920, has composting, the contract?
Perfect.
So...
I don't know anything about it. This is the first we've heard of this.
No, we've talked about it before, entire town would do it.
On-site, yes, we have. That was the only conversation, frankly. I think that everyone here talked about that it was not feasible, because it's not one facility that has a lot of food. And as a group, we moved on from that.
But it would be, it wouldn't, it would be just the same as if you have recycling on a, in a dorm, in a room or a floor, you just have, you know, one bin for recycling, one bin for garbage, one bin for food waste, it's just three different...
Yeah, it's 230 kitchens.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a lot of compost.
You're gonna, you're gonna contact, and...
We look, we're happy to look into, but we're in the finding stage, and it's the first time we're talking about bins for composting.
Actually, it is not. We've totally talked about it before.
No, we've definitely talked about it.
I thought we concluded we couldn't do it.
No, but I think we concluded that you can't do, like, windrows and, and doing your own, your own composting, but, you know, this, this finding statement is talking about doing stuff in line with what ACRRA is doing and what the college is doing, and they are both composting.
The minor collection was when Tom George was here, and the applicant said that they couldn't do it, it wasn't economically feasible, and I thought that we determined that this was not a significant impact that needed to be mitigated, because there was other avenues.
So I think, in that conversation, it was two different, two different conversations.
It's just trash pickup, that's all it is. It's just, it actually can potentially save you money.
And I'm not arguing that we won't look at it, and certainly if it's going to save money, why wouldn't we do it? And obviously, if it's good for the environment. We've also discussed the time that the town didn't have a program that could facilitate something. I, I know...
No, the town does, and the county does.
Not...
And they have had for a while.
I think the purpose of this discussion is to discuss among the board aspects that need mitigation and how we're gonna mitigate them, so if we can maybe keep our conversations. It's not like a back and forth right now, is my understanding, about, you know, we're talking about mitigation aspects and how we're discussing mitigating them, so, there we are.
Does SUNY have this?
Yep, Royal carding is who they use.
Or party provides it?
Yep, they pick up every day.
So the presumption could be, it can be done, if it should, for some reason, turn out that the circumstances at Park Point are different than SUNY, and it's not economically feasible to do it, the applicant can request that the conditions be modified. So we can state that is our expectation, is a requirement, proposed mitigation, and let the applicant investigate, and if it is not feasible to do it...
Stop and Shop does composting, too.
Oh, that's a different...
I'm just saying, it's a big commercial property that does composting.
It's a big commercial property. You got, you got individual kitchens here. I know how much compost I generate in my house, and I have a bin in the back, but it takes me a good week to fill up something like that. And, so, I'm looking at, you know, buildings with kitchens that, you know...
Yeah, but you have, like, a couple on every floor, you know? I, I don't know, I'm not thinking it'd be something that you'd have to have in every room. It could be just like, you bring it to your floor, and then they, I don't know.
My point is, this is commercially available, so it's...
Yeah.
And if it is, the applicant should be able to sign up. If it's cross-prohibitive for some reason, they can't explain why.
I, I, we weren't, we weren't provided with the egg of this section, do we? And I thought that the FEIS, we investigated, and there's reason we couldn't, I can't remember.
All right, so we're finished on that discussion. We're gonna, I'm putting something on that, because, and again, what we're looking at is a bin that some garbage company takes offsite and disposes of. It's not being left onsite, it's not being utilized onsite or anything else like that. Just looking as part of recycling as the section is, there's a section on compost, and how do they do it in garden apartments? Let's see what we come back with. I know it works very well in large commercial establishments, it works very well in, in food places.
College kids will wanna do this, too.
We're all concerned about education for the tenants, because there's certain things that you don't want in that compost.
True, but that's just a matter of putting signs up and...
What do you mean, though?
You can't put meat or...
No, that's, that depends what you're doing with, with the compost. If you're trying to create compost for, like, high-quality soil, you would not include meat. But, like, Royal carding picks up anything compostable...
That's cool.
Because it, it's just used for topsoil. So you don't, you can put meat in it, you can put shredded coffee cups in it, and the rest is...
Is that required mitigation for any other applicant, like this applicant?
No, because we're in 2014, the times are changing, and this is the new world we live in.
All right, take a look at it, that's a...
Well, I was just, I was just responding to where it's talking about the, the applicant will coordinate with recycling programs on the SUNY campus.
Yeah.
So, if we're gonna have statements like that, the SUNY campus is doing composting. Recycling facilities will be designed and maintained in accordance with ACRRA requirements. You know, ACRRA doesn't require composting, but they, they definitely accommodate composting.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, Mike, we, we actually do have it, and it is, the town in New Falls was doing it. The tipping fee was reduced by the county, so they actually now do it through the college. There are many challenges to it, it's the segregation of material for the composting. It is a profitable business, you can turn it into soil. The other part of the profitable business is selling the silverware. You'd be amazed how many plates with silverware. Students amazingly, it's very difficult to scrape, screw it up, a plate.
Not losing a plate?
And then put a plate into its proper place. So it is labor-intensive, it is something the town would like to get back into, but the county made a much lower bid for Royal to pick it up and transport it at a much greater cost than we could ever absorb in the town. So there is a value to it, there is a program on campus that is viable. They may be able to do it for this project, move it over to one of the campus bins, but it's only viable at a very large source. Royal will not do it to single restaurants, they will not do it to a, a small area, because it is, the sorting of the products...
Oh, yeah.
It's costly, unfortunately.
But there are other, there are other compost haulers, there are compost haulers getting involved in this business.
Absolutely, and they're gonna find that the cost is very prohibitive because of the sorting issues, it's a high education...
Well, it's the same thing.
So anyway, I just, I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, it's okay.
The town did attempt to do it, we are doing it successfully, but some areas, and it does work, but there are many challenges to education.
All right, anything else on solid waste? Did you add something else? Tim?
No.
No? Okay. I'll take a look at that, and then... Noise! Did we locate it?
Yeah.
Okay.
One FW-0656-N.
I get that last letter, that's the key. Hey, where are your comments on the noise section?
I didn't review noise, yeah.
Okay, so we'll put that one on.
Yeah, now the, the, the EIS, I guess, it's noise and odors, but they...
Wasn't much of, the only reference to odors is really this sort of thing.
Yeah, but, but to make it go in sync with, the other thing, I don't know, it might be used for consistency.
Well, the Mariello residents...
Do you have anything on noise? Be quiet about that?
Yeah.
We shift to energy.
Yeah, I have things on energy.
I didn't review energy either.
Well, I know, George, you sent something in an email...
These were sent more recently.
Yeah, somebody commented, when I got...
Oh, about the 15% and 25% energy conservation?
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think if we could just have proof of that claim, would be great. I don't know if that was specifically in energy, in the email.
Yes, it's under the proposed mitigation of one, yeah, how, how documented. It could be an interesting student project, you know, they could learn how to evaluate all this stuff. But that's up to the college to assign and... But it would be interesting to know if that really makes any difference.
Well, I, I had some discussion with Stacy about this. The thing that I wanted to clarify is, what's the baseline? And Stacy concluded after looking at the section in the EIS, that the baseline is the standard New York State Energy Conservation, that's another wording, the Energy Conservation Code. So if you, if you do what you're required to do by the, the New York State Climate Code, it'll be a baseline. Then you have to do Energy Star III, because that's part of the town notes, and then you also add on, probably, NGBS. And the difference between doing those two steps and the baseline, according to the DIS, is 15% to 25% energy savings. But the difficulty I was having is I went through the DIS, is really finding a metric to figure out how much was actually being accomplished. There was a lot of explanation as to how the Energy Conservation Process would work, how various factors would be incorporated into the plan. It was not really like, this is what's going to happen as a consequence. So Stacy, and the other question I had for Stacy is, how do we actually know what gets built is going to conform to both Energy Star and NGBS? Her explanation is this: The first step is having a consultant review the building plans to confirm that the design does incorporate those two standards. The next part is, once they've built it, have someone inspect it to determine that the built structure does in fact conform. So for example, if the NGBS requires a 12-inch wall with a certain type of insulation, first the building plan has to show that, and then ultimately, the plan, the building that's actually constructed, has to be inspected and confirmed to comply with that standard. Windows being airtight, same thing, it's gotta be specified on the plan, and it's actually gotta be built that way. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
So there would, she will obviously need to retain people to review the plans, confirm that, and that's with any large project, because typically, contracts have that work to somebody with competence in that area.
Just test requirements, too, along the way.
Well, we need, we need, we need to test, and we need to know we've tested, and achieved the results.
That's all part of the process, I mean, that's...
We're not saying anything you're not gonna do.
No, it's, it's...
And we've, we've got to, you know, going in, how we're gonna measure it, and then agree upon getting there.
But whether it gets to 15% to 25%, which is the ultimate, that was the only number I really found, so I stuck it in, said, okay, use best efforts, which means you make a good faith effort to demonstrate that the baseline, this is the result you get when you incorporate those two standards.
All right, so, at this stage of the game...
I just, one other question for the applicant. There is, in the, the FEIS, reference to using LEDs?
Yeah.
Like, that's inside, public area?
Inside and outside.
Okay, so for instance, in the apartment units, there is going to be LED pictures?
What I've always said is, 99, we're, as far as I know, 100%, but in case somehow one, like, picture gets in, it's not LED, I would say 99%. I mean, yes, inside all the units, all the pictures will play in, and LED.
Stacy thought that was a big step.
Yeah, they improved a lot, too.
Okay. Where I'm at is that we still have to do E, L, N, O, and K.
I, I have a couple little comments, or whatever, on, on O.
Okay, sure.
I'm not done with O. On page two, lines 30 to 33...
What is O?
Energy?
Energy.
Oh, energy, sorry.
It says, "In addition, the project will reduce energy costs of current students who travel to the SUNY campus by vehicle from residences elsewhere in Ulster County. While those units may then be occupied by other renters, it is likely that new renters will elect to move to a unit with a more convenient location, resulting in a savings in travel and energy." I don't quite understand that. The new renters are people who would fill in the occup, the units that students moving to Park Point would vacate?
Yes. My, the presumption I'm trying to articulate here is, if there's an apartment in Roseville, rented by a student because he can't find housing in the New Falls area, when he leaves that unit, whether it's to go to Park Point, or go to a unit in New Falls that's been vacated by a student who went to Park Point, he's moving out of that unit in Roseville. he's moving out of that unit in Rosendale. I believe it's more likely that's going to be occupied by somebody who wants to live in Rosendale, or in that general area where it's more convenient.
So we're, we're talking about the, the travel, um, use of gasoline and stuff like that, and not the fact that the older units might not be as energy efficient, because they're gonna be occupied anyway by somebody. Not like they'll disappear.
But George, I think the problem with that logic is where you start from. No one is leaving Rosendale and moving to Park Point. It's just, it's a much more expensive property. Like, rents in Rosendale are significantly cheaper.
But people are probably moving from other, I mean, somewhere. Like, I don't see how that impacts, I agree, I don't see how that changes.
No, but, but that's, that's kind of the...
Well, that's the logic that you could offer in the D I S.
But that, that's, that logic does not make sense.
It's logical.
How?
Well, I, I...
People, people are, are not gonna, they're not gonna...
They're twice as much rent.
Will they be paying for it? I'm not...
Well, I said we're never gonna manage.
There will be an incremental effect, at least, if the basic premise...
But who, who's gonna pay a several hundred dollar premium to live that much closer to campus?
I think you gotta look at the colleges, the transition, it's a four-year, or maybe a five-year, or a six-year, um, transition with the, with the population. So I think, as it, as a turnover population, these people aren't going into rental units for five, ten years, or twenty years. These are all, you know, a couple of year rentals, and they keep moving on that.
Sure.
Um, so I think over a transition, that you do see, as the rent change, as things change, you open up a bunch of units here, it's gonna impact the surrounding area.
But your, your, the idea is that, I understand, it's not, it's not truly the same person living in Rosendale who's then gonna move to Park Point. But the, the concept is, we're, we're offering a different product with this project that's going to attract folks living in the periphery, but the periphery rents are much cheaper. So who would ever make that move?
Well, people who couldn't find a nice apartment but would have paid for one. But on the other hand, somebody moving into the hypothetical Rosendale apartment might actually work in Kingston and end up driving farther. There's a lot, we don't know about people's patterns of where they live and where they drive.
But I think this basic concept would make sense if the, the prices were comparable. But there's a huge difference in terms of this project's offering versus the rest of the county.
I just pointed if you have to choose between A and B, and I'm right there, A and B, whichever is cheaper is the one you choose. But you have, you have the question of housing stock, housing condition, you have the question of convenience, uh, living five minutes instead of twenty minutes.
Absolutely, some people will pay a premium for those things, but we're talking about a several hundred dollar difference.
Yes, and you're talking about...
No, no, it's, it's incremental. This might be eight hundred dollars, this rental, this might be six hundred, and that might be four hundred. We're not saying the guy in the four hundred is gonna spend double to get to the eight hundred one. But the guy in the six hundred might have been looking for an eight hundred dollar one and be willing to move, that opens up to six hundred. This guy in the four hundred thinks, from a convenience, so it's, it's not a leap from this stage to that stage. It's more of an amorphous move of people bouncing into more choices, I think that's what you're getting at.
Well, is there a study of any kind that shows that that's actually, that somebody talked to peers, students, living in, and asked them if they would move if that was available to them? I mean, there's no study to that, you know, it's just theory.
College stuff.
Well...
Well, the college has made that claim on numerous occasions.
Well, we haven't seen the study.
Nobody's ever talked to anybody.
Well, yeah, it depends on who you're talking to, and who, who's appealing to what.
When Stop &amp; Shop was coming, and there was discussion about why do we need a supermarket? We have a supermarket. And this is gonna be another supermarket. And how many supermarkets does New Falls need? And what you see are people, I believe, going to Stop &amp; Shop, because they like that store better than ShopRite.
That... But that's, that's not a good example, because, because what you're talking about is a ShopRite versus a Balducci's, and we don't have like a super expensive luxury fine foods grocery store, that's not what, that's...
My personal preference is, if I were making a choice, like you're talking about, I would be at Stop &amp; Shop. No, at ShopRite. I'd more price that to a supermarket.
ShopRite and Stop &amp; Shop are pretty comparable offerings.
I know, that I know.
Well, that's not, that's not going on our grocery pattern shopping, my wife's a future.
There, I mean, in some respects, it's their problem if it doesn't attract people, none of these things will come to this. But I think the idea of substitution is, is one of the generally valid. And the other thing is, there's an extent to which you need to consider whether, whether it's a an imbalance in terms of apartments. Would somebody in Rosendale live in New Falls and pay more money if there was something that was available and of quality, so they'd say, yeah, I'll pay two hundred more for that, I'm not gonna pay two hundred dollars more for my apartment, which is not that great. I see the value, I want the opportunity, I will go there. Because if it isn't there in New Falls, they, they don't have that opportunity. And that's what I'm hearing the app, the, uh, the marketing pitch for this to be.
It's fine, that, that can be the marketing pitch, but we can't then develop a transportation or traffic argument based on a marketing pitch that feels dubious.
Well, if it...
Well, even, I think just, you know, back, backtrack, if you opened up seven hundred beds in New Falls, regardless, and they were at the exact same rent as everything else around you, you are, you would get the same hopping and moving and substitution that, that would go on, because people would say, oh, the same rents, I'm gonna look at what's more convenient for me. And, um, what, you know, ways and pros and cons of, of that. But you would still get the, the shifting of the personnel, because you've opened up additional roomings here, and they have a college here that would attract them.
Completely agree with you, and if that was the case, then you would use this, this traffic study argument, but that's not the case.
Well, I think, you gotta look at the demographics, the demographics of the students coming in, and the backgrounds of them coming in, and what they're looking for, either them or their parents or what have you, or what they're looking for, for, uh, housing stock. And I, you know, when you bring in fifteen hundred students every year, uh, or two thousand students, probably closer every year, you're gonna get a mix of students. I'm just saying, incoming freshmen, if you wouldn't pick on it. If you go back and look at, you know, where they're coming from, and what they're looking for, over two thousand kids, you'll get a mixture of what people will consider where I'm moving from. I always get the impression if I had a nice big home in Long Island, and my daughter was coming up to college, where would she live, and what would I pay for it if I could afford it? That's, that might be something different than someone else who's coming out of Brooklyn and is taking a subway and bus up, uh, looking for someplace to live.
It's much more expensive to live in Brooklyn than it is in Long Island, but, but...
Depends where you're living in Long Island.
That's true.
I must have been in the wrong sections of Brooklyn when I grew up.
But I, I don't think there's that, there's no, there's no scenarios that show that kids wanna spend more money. I, I completely agree, there will be families that can afford, you know, fancier digs, and, and those people will always pay up for it. But, you know, this is a, this is a nicer offering, and that's perfectly fine, and if that's the route the college wants to take, that's the route the college is taking. If that's the route the applicant wants to take, that's the route they're taking. But we cannot say that traffic will be mitigated based on the substitution effect, because the substitution effect is, doesn't make sense if the offering is much more expensive.
It does in one respect. If this wasn't there, and they have the same number of students, they will live somewhere else. It will presumably be farther away than it is, than Park Point is.
Yeah.
Because there just isn't any housing that's comparable in location. So these people are gonna spread out, it's, it's the, the clustering analogy. People are clustered at Park Point, but you take away Park Point, they have to go somewhere where there's an apartment.
That's what they're already doing. I mean, originally, I know that Katie and Brian Obak and different people from some environmental group on campus or something, came to one of the, um, public hearings and said that they were in favor of the project for just that reason. That's one thing. Number two, so then what, so then you would say...
Just that reason meaning that, that, the families that are, that are in need of... No, but, but it's only going to work for the families that can afford expensive housing.
Yeah, no, I'm not, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that. Well, so then what would you say is, so then there's no mitigation to the traffic then, you're saying, or what, then what would you propose?
Here, here in the energy, all we're talking about is miles traveled by seven hundred, six hundred and ninety-six students.
If it doesn't work, then the project's not, is gonna fail. So the people gotta come from somewhere, move closer.
What we're talking about is, and then getting back to George, is six hundred and ninety-six students moving into the area, and attending school that would have been somewhere further away. Whether they're in that building, that building, where have you. Somehow, there's a mix of adding these things and putting them closer to the source. If this was a job location, and somebody came in and said, I'm gonna build a, a factory here, and employ six hundred and ninety-six people, and I'm gonna build, uh, housing for them right here by the factory, from where they were commuting from, you would then say, yes, that is an energy, uh, reduction, because they're traveling less, they're less on the road for that. So they're, from a usage point of fuel, they would be traveling less than they would have been if they weren't in a building there. That's all that statement I'm saying.
I don't necessarily disagree with you.
I, I don't know anything about, anything about whether the, the project is gonna fail or succeed based on the appetites of, of the potential residents, and, and what they can afford or cannot afford. But I, I don't have any comfort with the idea that, that traffic is going to be reduced because of this project. I think the, the idea that the traffic studies were only done during the week, and not on Saturdays and Sundays, when we actually have traffic issues in New Falls, because this town is, is, you know, functions on tourism as well as the college. And then also, and I, and I brought this up before, these students living in this, south of the campus, will drive and park on the village side streets, because that's what they currently do. So there will be additional traffic that is not there currently.
I thought this, I might be wrong, but didn't even refer to New Falls, I referred to like Ulster County traffic going down. Wasn't there a thing about that, and that in New Falls? I haven't really studied the traffic section that well, because everyone else is smarter about it than I am. But that, that, that was the whole thing, that New Falls, I never thought New Falls traffic would go down. Why would it? Because of exactly what you said. But I thought that generally...
The theory is that New Falls traffic would go down during commuting hours, like, so if a, if a kid was living in, in, you know, the outskirts, and then was commuting to New Falls.
Yeah, okay.
Then they were no longer commuting to New Falls, because they were already, or, you know, we had a higher percentage of quote-unquote "on-campus" kids.
Yeah.
So there'll be less kids that way. But the, but these additional residents, because we're adding to the town of New Falls' population, will then be shopping at, at ShopRite or Stop &amp; Shop, um, on Fridays and Saturdays, when there are traffic issues in New Falls. And then they will also be using their cars to drive, and they're not gonna, they're not gonna pay for a parking permit to move their car from Park Point to a college facility, parking facility. They're gonna move it to the village free streets.
So your argument is the mitigation is not appropriate then?
Let me, let me go back, all, this isn't talking about traffic at all, the energy use.
Well, the energy is not...
I'm just trying to get this paragraph, the energy use, that removing, relocating X the number of people, even if it's five people, relocating them from wherever they're commuting now, to someplace closer to where they have to be. That in itself will reduce, well, the number of times they have to travel on the road, and miles drive, and gasoline use. When they come, might add to the traffic, when they leave, might lessen the traffic. That's transportation, here, it's just talking about the energy use.
No, but if it adds to the traffic, then it's not minimizing the energy usage.
Well, so then...
Why, but if you're in traffic for two minutes in town, it saves you from driving twenty miles, I think there is a reduction in energy use. I just, you know, it's...
It's not eliminating it.
One, one little thing we could do is just to use the first sentence of that paragraph, and forget about worrying about the units that will be occupied by other renters, because that's, that's a lot of unknowns going there. And these other renters could not, might not be students, and they might be people commuting all sorts of places. But, um, can I, I wanna, I wanna jump out of this groove to the previous groove, um, the previous sentence. Paragraph twenty-five through twenty-eight. The extent that the prospective residents who are living in residences that do not provide a comparable area of energy performance, it will be a net benefit. I, that doesn't hold water with me, because somebody else's, those, those residences are not going away that are inefficient. I, do you think so?
If they're truly inefficient, inefficient.
Well...
I mean, that's the, the general nature of the housing stock, is it cycles over time and improves. What was current in the nineteen twenties is no longer current.
I don't know, looking at the age of a lot of our buildings, and their, their particular state, and whatever, their lack of being upgraded, it's gonna be a very long cycle.
Wait, why would it go away? Wouldn't just the rent, like...
Other people will end up living there.
If it, if it's an economically rentable unit, yes, but some percentage, what I've heard described is that are some percentage of rental units that are occupied because there is no choice.
I, where?
I'm just saying, what I've heard at the public hearings.
I've heard, I've heard SUNY make that accusation, but I, I've never seen any, any unoccupiable housing stock.
What, there's tons of, there's tons, sorry. Like, there are apartments that are so terrible, no one lives in them? Yeah, I could name them.
So there are, there are...
I mean, yeah, there's, I mean, well, I don't know that they're unoccupiable, the ones that I can think of, people live in, in pretty squalor conditions.
But do they live in them, do they live in them because they're inexpensive?
Yeah.
Or because they cannot find anything else?
No, I think because they're cheap, yeah.
Right, so that's the difference, though.
Exactly.
Is that, you're, you're still gonna have people who, who have very little money to spend on housing.
Yeah, exactly.
Those people are not gonna trade up.
Yeah, they're not gonna move to Park Point, if they're paying two hundred dollars in a place where they're only gonna upgrade.
As long you haven't rented your own, okay.
I do know, although I do wonder what their heating bills are.
Oh, the heating bill will kill them.
They don't even turn the heat on.
Because I'm landlord.
The heating bill is part of the...
It'll cost them so much, they can't afford to put insulation in. I just, I don't think that's really a significant savings, um, because the buildings aren't gonna disappear, and the upgrading of them is problematic.
Okay.
And then there's a long thing on page three, under site plan and site work, that's put in as mitigation measures to impact energy usage, and we're still on energy. And a lot of them, I'm, I'm on lines like twenty-eight through, a lot of them.
It's all indented and in a tablet.
Yeah, a lot of them, I can't figure out how to...
Let me explain what...
Just to explain that, that was taken verbatim from the section in the FEIS, was mitigation for the section. So I didn't wanna edit that.
Okay, because a lot of them don't have much to do with energy at all.
But it's in the energy mitigation section. So...
Okay, it just seems weird to have reducing imperv as an energy mitigation.
Oh, if you take it out in the long run, you know, deal with the water and...
Yeah, a lot of these things are mitigations in the other section.
Yeah.
But is it just overcomplicated to switch everything around?
Well, the EIS says these things have been done as mitigation. The finding statement, I think generally incorporates most of those things in different sections. But I was interested in getting it out, you know, trying to get perfection.
Yeah, well, they, they are mitigations, but they don't, they're not energy mitigations.
Right, like construction of wetland buffers, that's not an energy mitigation?
Yeah, removing invasive species.
No, I'm just saying that's where it comes in.
Uh-huh, okay.
And a stretch, and a stretch.
But I feel like most of them are energy mitigations.
Well, some of them are. Like electric part-changing stations and shared riding and bus loop and bike racks and sidewalk connections, those are...
What about creation of new wildlife habitats? Which, what are the new wildlife, Peter?
Community gardens.
They're the groundhogs that are eating in the community gardens that aren't there now.
The logic is, I recall, it's actually the terrestrial ecology section.
Well, they're nicely planted stormwater places, too.
Okay. Folks, I think we've...
It's getting kinda late.
Yeah, I think we're getting kinda wacky and, you know, okay. E, L, N, and I would suggest if you have any comments on O, to send them to George and K.
E, L, N...
E, we'll do E, L, N, and K next time. And that should get them all, George? We didn't have anything else coming out that we didn't know about yet.
The, just the groundwater is out.
Groundwater is out, yeah, that was...
Sorry, surface water.
There you go, make me go through it all over again. Yeah, E, we gotta do E. We didn't do groundwater today.
This is the surface water section. Physically have it all sent in. Trying to figure out a way to send it without using the code.
The secret code? Everybody would know how it is.
It's not that much of a problem.
Okay, and D.
It's in the translation table.
So it's E, L, N, K, and D. Or D, E, L, N, O, N, K? Don't get a word out of it. Okay?
I have one question. Do you know, my recollection is there is a requirement that freshmen live on campus. Is that true? Is anybody...
I don't know for sure. I know that there's an issue accommodating transfers. So making that point of statement, I don't know if that applies to incoming fall freshmen or how they, because a lot of times they have to turn away when a transfer's being provided a house.
Well, the question is if all freshmen have to live on campus and your project is not considered on campus, means you won't have 25% of the student body available for tenants.
That's correct.
Is that your expectation?
Absolutely. We're just saying that. Other campuses, right, there are stricter stipulations where we actually have agreements with the campus. And we don't have freshmen or sophomores. So we're used to that kind of thing. We take that into account.
Is that, I seem to remember some discussion about freshmen are not allowed to have cars. Is that kind of the same rule, or? Is that... Freshmen can't have cars and they have to live on campus. I mean, it makes sense that...
Are we supposed to be looking at R also, the phasing plan?
I think Doug has marked up a copy of R to give me some, because we wanted to update the dates.
I just pulled it.
So...
I feel like it's right.
Okay, can I make a copy and I'll send out a revised one in just a couple of minutes?
My next meeting, I'm gonna try to go through these sections.
I'm gonna finish the sections next time.
Hey, also.
Yes. Yeah, regular agenda on March 10th is our next meeting. There's one, we do have an application, accessory apartments, I think.
Two, two applications. We have Route 208, two lots subdivision.
L and P is back.
And the accessory apartment.
And the accessory apartment, yeah. L and P is back for that one. And the accessory apartment. And so we haven't heard any, so that's where we're at right now. So I'd really like to get all our comments in on the, on the rest of the sections so we can then take one, swipe at the whole thing so we can put it together.
Will you be around next week?
This week I'm around, not next week.
My idea is, well, if we try to coordinate with you of K, see if there are any issues that need to be resolved and then I'll have somebody I can sit around with.
All right. We gotta do it this week.
What about the town board meeting on Thursday? The applicant is meeting with the town board. I mean, is there planning board involvement at that meeting? Or how does that, you know, what are we doing as a planning board?
I'm gonna try to get together with Sue prior to that to see what she wants, if any, or anything else like that. They've been pretty close to the project right along. That could be available for her, but I haven't heard anything from her yet. So we're gonna try and see when we can meet.
The town board would like to invite any of you members that would like to attend, please attend the meeting. And if you have any questions, if you could forward the questions to the chair. And then Michael, who are holding those to Susan. If you have any questions that you feel might be involving the town or possibly pilot or anything, please feel free to formulate any questions. And Mike, Michael then present those to Susan. And then please, we invite any involved here to please attend because there's a presentation to the board and not a question-and-answer period for the public. We will be taking public comment, but we don't want to be having a public comment at the end of the meeting just for the interest of time also. We will be holding, we tried to get three other venues and not have any luck. So we're gonna be holding it in the community center that is looking for, for a dirty, organized seating. So if you are willing to be attending, please also let Susan know. And we will be also be sure to allow seating. Be more of a punch, if you have a question, price that you think is perfect for the project.
Okay. Anything else before the board? Motion to adjourn? Thank you.